...the information, it's privileged, but the foundation of the concern I think that some of you have with the consequences of this is just that we were really direct about the impact that this is going to have and it's not likely that there's going to be a way to save this without, for this project to move forward without something we don't, you know, we can't conceive of right now. Is that how?
Hi, would feel more comfortable asking my questions in an executive session.
Okay, then we're gonna have to take it up after the council meeting, but we don't have time prior to that for about three minutes from starting.
Can I will read forward this email chain to everyone, just so that like it's top of mind?
So, my one request procedurally would be, once you finish your agenda, instead of adjourned at that point, um, make the motion for the exact session and that way we can go into the exact session before that meeting gets adjourned.
Can I, should I just ask for Counselor Pinter, we'd rather make it, should the motion need for an executive session to understand the moratorium and develop, we're gonna be specific to this, this one?
Either way, I'm happy to give you the sites, the Stachter sites.
I guess I want to make it broad enough that if we have questions beyond same marks, just trying to understand how the moratorium, that you're allowing us to talk about it.
Sure, I'm happy to answer.
Okay.
The questions you have, understanding that the scope of the exact session is to get legal advice. So to be, so to not have you disappointed, um, we're probably not prepared to go much further with a lot of detail about the moratorium and what we're finding and because we're really interested in our research right now, so we're not at a point where we can talk about, or ready to talk about, um, how much, how much availability of service we have and whether to make any changes or anything, just to be clear.
Thank you, I don't contemplate going down that direction.
All right, no other questions or comments for this point. My guys got about two minutes and we're on the dice.
No, but I have my, my mother, my family, let's talk about, um, dry news. It was like, I, uh...
Thank you so much.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 22nd, 2018 Westminster City Council. At this time, I'll ask everyone please to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Parker, please take the roll. Here.
Bird.
Here.
DeCambre.
Demont.
Here.
Pinter.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
At this time, I would like to move the motion to excuse Counselor DeCambre, who continues to be on maternity leave from tonight's meeting. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carried, Ms. DeCambre is excused. Moving on to the next item, the consideration of the October 8th, 2018 City Council meeting, Mr. Demont.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the October 8th, 2018 meeting as presented.
Ms. Sykes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion is carried.
Next item we have is proclamation for the National Business Women's Week, Ms. Scully, if you will, please.
Yeah. Come in here. We don't want you to get away once we get to you.
I wish I lived in Westminster.
Aww, you're real close.
I'm the Westminster part of Arvada, so.
I don't remember that annexation, but we'll take it.
Okay. And I'm going to have you ladies introduce yourself and introduce your organization and I will...
Okay. I'm Catherine Wallace and I am the President of the Northwest Metro BPW Chapter and I am Marshall McLagan Clark and I am the membership, um, person for the organization.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about BPW?
Yes, I'm staring at my phone because I wanted to get the mission right. Our mission is to achieve equity for all women in the workplace through advocacy, education, and information. And we meet on the first Wednesday of the month, right here in Westminster, at the, um, Corona's, thank you, Corona's Restaurant and we welcome everyone and we always have a presentation and Councilwoman Scully was our presenter last time and we have been in the Westminster and Arvada area for a very, very long time and we really appreciate this recognition.
Okay, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, only that when you came and made your presentation, it was so wonderful. We really appreciated it.
Thank you very much. Tonight's presentation is, this is National Business Women's Week and we wanted to recognize that as a city and honor your organization as, um, a group that recognizes this week is very important. So, whereas working women constitute 72 million, or almost half of the nation's workforce, and strive to serve their communities, their states, and their nation in professional, civic, and cultural capacities, and whereas women-owned businesses account for 30% of all US businesses, generating 1.9 trillion in sales and employing $9.2 million dollars, million dollars, million people, and whereas working women should be applauded for their contributions to the workplace and the financial stability of their families, especially during the economic downturn, when more women have become their family's breadwinner, and whereas, since 1928, National Business Women's Week was honored, the contributions of working women and employers who support working women and their families. Whereas, let's, let us come together to create a more equitable community and to reaffirm that the City of Westminster strongly recognizes the immense value of women in the workforce. Now, therefore, I, Herb Atchison, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire council and staff, do hereby proclaim October 22nd through 26th, 2018 to be National Business Women's Week. The City of Westminster and I urge all citizens, businesses, and community organizations to join this salute to working women, encourage and promote the celebration of the achievements of all working women as they contribute daily to our economic, civic, and cultural goals and livelihood, dated this 22nd day of October, 2018.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Very nice, thank you very much.
We really appreciate that.
Do you want to warm up on it? Yes. Picture.
Thank you. And just one thing I want to mention, working women have been, well, BPW's been, uh, an organization since 1919 and, uh, in Arvada, it was started in 1956, uh, the restaurant of Bernie's that was down, well, on Grandview Avenue, it's now been redeveloped down there. But anyway, we've been active in the City of Arvada, Westminster since 1956.
Wow, that's incredible, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scully, thank you guys for coming out tonight. Next item on the agenda is citizen communication, it's a period of time for up to five minutes where we welcome anyone to come, talk to any item that they wish on, uh, anything except where a public hearing is scheduled, we have no public hearings tonight, so we will open up the agenda, this, again, the green light comes on once you identify who you are, yellow light when you have one minute left, and the red when your time is up. I only have one person who's signed up for tonight, Mr. Seymour, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Rich Seymour, I'm here tonight on behalf and as a trustee of the Westminster Historical Society. Last Wednesday, Westminster lost an icon of history, Linda Charrington. Our current president, Linda Graybill, wrote for the Westminster Window, Linda was Miss Westminster History personified, she was the go-to person for all things historical. She knew many of Westminster's history makers personally and many generations of schoolchildren knew her as the history leader. Linda leaves behind an incredible legacy. She joined the Westminster Historical Society in 1959 and was our president from 1972 to 2012 and most recently was serving as our vice president. She has been a member of the Westminster Historic Landmark Board since 2005 and in 2006, she received the Mary Chantel Award for Outstanding Service as a volunteer. Also, as part of her legacy, children along the Bradburn and 120th neighborhood will be able to play forever in the Charrington Park there in the neighborhood. And in 2015, she was honored as the Christmas Tree Lighter for the Historical Westminster Hometown Christmas Lighting. President Graybill noted this week also, she was vigilant in preserving and sharing Westminster history, there will be countless times that several of us will wish we could just call her up and ask her a question. Her services will be this Thursday, October 25th, at 11:00 AM, the Westminster United Methodist Church, 3585 West 76th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not sign up that has an item they'd like to bring forward to council at this time? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the city, I'm sorry, Report of City Officials, Mr. Tripp?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item on that, it will be the Report of City Council Comments, any comments from any young member of council? Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this past week, I had the, the distinct privilege of attending the hippie field trip at Westminster Police Department. This was a, an outstanding group of people from Unison who come together and, um, I'd like to read just a little bit about what they do, this is Unison's third year administering the program, which grew from the ground up. Currently, they serve 46 families throughout the county and nine reside in Westminster and today, Unison is the only public housing authority in Colorado and nationwide, to our knowledge, administering this transformational dual-generation program and it's, it's parents and their children and they bring them to the police station and they have activities and then they get a tour of the police station and many of our police officers, um, sit side by side with these kids, it's just tremendous, they had over 70 people there last week and it was just a tremendous event, so I wanted to give them a big shout out and I look forward to being invited to the next one. And then also, um, I had the privilege of attending, um, the Patrice Banks, um, speech on Friday night, um, she is the CEO of Girls Auto Clinic and she also gave a great workshop, I understand, on Saturday, but she is just a tremendous individual, if you ever have a chance to watch her speak and listen to her, she talks about the power, the empowerment of women and owning businesses and, um, knowing how to take care of our cars, so, I'm gonna sign up for the next workshop because I think I need to know that.
Ms. Sykes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this has been a busy week for Westminster, um, on Saturday, I'm sure a few people in the room joined us at the Harvest Festival and we weren't alone, we were joined by, the last number I heard was 34,000 people came to our new downtown site. It was an amazing event, really well done, um, somehow, with that big of an event, it still had an absolute community feel. Um, 10 hot air balloons blew up, um, and, and lit up throughout the night, so, um, just wanted to say thank you to our parks, recs, and to our police officers and to all the department heads and to all the volunteers that made it happen, really a memorable day for our residents and, and a lot of enthusiasm for that site. Um, I also wanted to let people know that there's opportunities, if they want to continue to give back to the city, if they were, had such a good feeling at our Harvest Fest and want to be a bigger part of it, we have openings in our boards and commissions, um, the deadline to apply is November 1st, so please go to our website. Um, and then if you are somebody who really cares about the way the city looks, um, or you think that we have too strict of, of guidelines and you want to loosen them, um, or if you have ideas about how we should grow, um, there's two different ways that you can put your fingerprints on what, the way Westminster will look in the future. Um, we are currently undertaking a design, um, and code update and you can go on the city website, there's, right on our homepage is a place that you can fill out a survey and do kind of what your preferences are, um, and then we also have Westminster Forward, which is our comprehensive plan update and that's done every five years and that's really the document that dictates what our city looks like into the future. So please, um, let us know, this is your community, be part of determining what we look like, um, that is all.
Mr. Demont? I just had a couple of things to add, I went to the festival on Saturday, was amazing, great job by everybody who put that on, quite, quite the event, it was hard to get around, there were so many people, so it was a lot of fun. The other thing I did attend, uh, Friday night was the, the shecanic is what they, she calls herself, I took my daughter there, who I, having two daughters, it was a really great event for, for my young daughter to hear how she can be the master of her own destiny and I thought that was great. The other thing that I think you missed though was it was at Duke's Autos Garage, that's been in the city for a very long time, very many great-looking classic cars that, that we got to look at, so it was a great event.
Any other comments from council? To, um, Jason, 34, 35, what do you think?
34,000.
That's the bottom number, did you count all the kids?
It's about 34,000, including children.
Including children, okay.
They are human.
Well, I just wanted to make sure they didn't miscount, you know, we have this problem in Westminster, we undercount things once in a while, it costs us money. Um, one of the things the group pulled off that was very unexpected, uh, if you didn't get a chance before 2 o'clock to buy tickets, they ran out of tickets at 2, so they quit selling the tastings for the barbecue event. Uh, I had a chance to talk to the facilitator of that event and it got so popular that we closed down the Kansas planned event because they all came to Colorado. Originally, they were anticipating 20 vendors, these were not people there to sell barbecue, but they were there for a national point competition going into a world championship, they ended up with 48 and they were just shocked that they got such a great turnout, but I talked to people from Oklahoma, Kansas, Wyoming, Nevada, I think I had a couple from New Mexico, we even got some all the way from Brighton, Colorado that came over, so they, they traveled long distance, they started showing up Thursday night in Winnebago's and I don't mean the little ones, I mean the big ones, and they were setting up and starting cooking on Friday, so a great turnout. Two groups, uh, one group in specific I want to mention that showed up on a day of service, we had not planned for them, we had over 100 members of Victory Church, they were running around in the red shirts all day, that came and gave a day of service to the city for that event, so that was just great, I appreciate Pastor Ware and his congregation helping us out, a lot of volunteers there, we saw groups that we've never seen there, our Sikh community came out and had a booth. Several of them had the same problem and as you've heard, we had a few people there. Costco now thinks that the Harvest Festival is the greatest thing going because everybody who kept running out of candy went to the Costco down the street and bought candy, so I don't know if they've got any Halloween products over there, left after Saturday, but give them a day or two and they'll restock and you go back over there, but thanks to them for helping us out, making sure they brought in some extra stuff over there, but, uh, I think we had people at the tents and the booths and our own games and stuff, but with that many people, no incidents that I'm aware of and according to the police department, everybody was cleared out safely gone by 9:00 PM and we didn't end until 8:00. So with all the traffic that was there, everything that went on, we really appreciate, uh, Jason, the parks and rec, the city staff, most of the division heads and department heads were there driving shuttle cars, I did get warned about one guy driving around in a green Oregon shirt, people trying to avoid that one. Uh, Dee Martin's name came up as being one of the best shuttle drivers in the group, so we had some great comments and stuff from everybody, but to all of you who came or those who've watched from a distance, thank you very much, this just proved that Westminster can throw a hell of a party and we had a good time and everybody was good. All right, moving on, next time on the agenda... will be the consent agenda, this is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote, we have confirmed through the council that there is no item on the consent agenda that is wished to be removed and Mr. Demont, if you'd like to make the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt consent agenda items 8A through 8F.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, ladies and gentlemen, this is a vote with your likes, please, and should have them up. And the motion carries on a six overall. Next item is Council's Bill Number 45 on First Reading Appropriating Transfer From The Westminster Economic Development Authority. And Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 45 on First Reading Appropriating A Transfer From The Westminster Economic Development In The Amount Of One Federal Capital Improvement Fund For The North Huron Interceptor Sewer Final Design Project.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we had several questions that went around about this item pre-meeting and, and before and so most of mine have been answered, so I guess really what I was getting to with most of my questions that I'd like to hear from staff is, with us having, uh, comp planned changes in the future, I'm curious about the timing of this and how important this is to do this now versus maybe waiting until we're done with the comp plan and my question comes around concern of, is, is this design going to be what's right once we go through the comp plan, um, process and making sure that this meets the needs of that area once we go through that process?
Mr. Tripp, you want to try to respond, do you want to have staff?
I'm gonna invite staff to come up who might want to jump into this, but as they do, I'm gonna just summarize and say, the answer to your question is yes, it is, it is recommended and we had a lot of discussion on the staff about, um, about the future use of this and development out of this I-25 North Corridor, this is consistent with the 2013 Comprehensive Plan and it supports that and so, as we went through the design process for looking at, um, our best ability to increase the sewer capacities to meet our current demands, uh, we discovered that there were certain things that needed to be done and therefore you've got this request in your agenda to expand the scope of, uh, the engineering services and we've, we're, we're telling you in advance that the construction in that area will be higher than what we thought it would be, but we've decided to make this recommendation to you because we think this is a level of construction that's, that's consistent with building out the, um, the North I-25 Corridor as it was anticipated at the, uh, development levels of sewer and water that we now are seeing necessary in the kind of development we're getting in that area, so, uh, the bottom line is, we think this is the right decision at this time and we think this is the, the time that we should do it because when we open that line up and we, and we put the pipe in, it should be sized appropriately to accommodate those needs. So, Eric and, and Andy, anything else you'd like to add, please?
Um, I, I think just to add to that, we've learned from experience that we don't want to undersize these sewers, uh, some of the sewers, uh, serving all the way from Orchard to 136th Avenue into the plant, date back to 1987, a lot of changes have occurred, uh, with, uh, comp plans and amendments and the history there, uh, so we, we worked with planning, staff, and economic development to really try to, uh, plan a variety of scenarios from, uh, what if we do nothing to max densities here, we really tried to be sensitive to what the impacts could be to our other utility areas as well, in particular, our water supply, so that kind of drove, um, some of the decision to not necessarily build to our highest densities. Uh, we chose kind of a middle ground option, uh, I just, we described it as option two in the agenda memo, that should give us plenty of capacities to build to our 2013 comp plan highest densities, uh, the densities tend to have a range depending on the land use type, plus added development, uh, up at the Orchard, which we refer to as their vision and so we're able to accommodate all that and, and basically build insurance into our sewer capacity, so as the comp plan progresses, uh, in their work, and Eric can speak more to that, as it progresses over the next several months to year, uh, we will have capacity in the sewer, this is really the best... the, uh, flows are increasing and before development builds out in these fields that are north of 136th Avenue, that's really the, the best value for us to put sewers in these field areas prior to the roads.
As Eric comes up, I want to say too, just to spin off is, and to emphasize, because there is a, there is a project mentioned, it's Vestar and the, and the development at the Orchard, but this is not just about that project, this is about all the development in that North I-25, that North Huron Basin and that goes all the way down to 128th, so this not only helps us meet the needs of continuing to have a, a vital orchards and, and project that's now owned by Vestar, but it's, uh, in particular, uh, gonna accommodate, uh, that development that would happen south of the, of the hospital.
And, and since I'm the one who asked that question and I'm glad you brought that up, to, to just clarify on it, and one of the things I was trying to understand was, you know, because you talked about some of this is to meet the needs of the current comp plan and then some of it is for future and I was trying to get a good idea around, um, what percent is future and what we are anticipating growth and, you know, also on, on the, the tail end of what's been going on in the Big Dry Creek Interceptor, um, how this keeps us from getting into that situation in that, and I think it would be beneficial for the public also to understand how this is funded differently than, than that is gonna be, especially on, on the tails of, of recent water discussions because this is different, so if, if you could just kind of go through that, I think that that would be good information for people.
Okay, all right. Hang on, Andy, for the record, would you back up and tell who you are and who you represent on the mic so we have it on the...
Absolutely, Andy Walsh, I'm a senior engineer with Public Works and Utilities.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Mr. Otselberger, will you do the same?
And I'm Eric Otselberger, Business Operations Coordinator for Community Development, I just want to compliment Mr. Walsh, you know, for an engineer, he speaks pretty well with land use and, 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 and I'm just, I'll echo some of Don's comments. with land use. And I'll echo some of Don's comments. Counselor Demott, so from a timing perspective, you know, essentially what this investment in sewer will do will allow the city to realize its current vision, which is, you know, building major employment daytime uses to sort of support some of the existing uses in that corridor. The North I-25 focus area is one of the city's five focus areas. And as Andy mentioned, this is sort of the middle of the road option. Our staffs work together and with economic development to run some land use scenarios. And this option is essentially that, you know, would get us approaching the max of that office, research and development, high intensity designation. So some of that will have to be worked through in actual development proposals. We're working, you know, through some initial concepts with some PDPs with some land interests in that area. But, you know, the devil's in the details when you get down because you, you know, of course, with those designations, you have primary uses, which would be medical offices or employment centers, you know, secondary uses, which could be a hotel or, you know, some very limited retail to support the business use. So this, you know, the council have, I think, a really great opportunity next year with the comp plan update process because we're working really hard as staff to better marry water supply planning and infrastructure constraints with, especially looking at the focus areas to try to give policymakers better information on what are those trade-offs in that limited water supply? If we do this here, what does that mean here? But, you know, this being a focus area, being very strategic, this, I think, fulfills existing vision that we understand could be tweaked, but it's certainly, as Andy said, it's sort of insurance, if you will. And at this time, it's less expensive to approach this. And then you mentioned the funding, and we're in a unique position here where this project would be funded from property tax increment in the active North Huron urban renewal area that runs through 2028. So we essentially have ten years left of that. And the city has some existing debt obligations from previous infrastructure work with Huron and the interchanges and some storm drainage work, but there's sufficient capacity to pursue this. So this will have no impact on the utility fund or ratepayers. So and it's really, you know, that intended use of those urban renewal and that property tax increment that has to be used within the urban renewal boundary. So this helps facilitate that development and is sort of, I think, you know, a win-win for the city trying to achieve vision and a revenue source that is available here because of the active urban renewal area.
That's really good because I think it's important that we split the rate increase from this because it's not playing into it. And sometimes people don't understand that. And I think it's important to point out. So thank you. And so if I'm hearing you right, this does adequately put us in a good position for future growth where we feel like this is going to meet our needs in the future, foreseeable future.
Mr. Kersbaum, you want to add something?
Yes, you have it right. But I do want to make it clear, especially for the record, that what this is, what this project before you tonight does is really it's the fulfillment of a sequence of events from a development agreement in 2017 to the pre-design work that Andy has taken on that you approved in the spring of this year. But it addresses the sewer component. And as you said, how do we know this fits with the comprehensive plan revision? Eric did a good job of describing how this blends with it well, and we've set ourselves up for success through this project for any such growth from the sewer perspective. But it is possible that as that comprehensive plan is developed and finalized and brought before you, if it foresees a future greater than the 2013 comp plan, we would, we may also have water-related infrastructure that we would come to you at that time. Now is not the right time to do that because we don't know and don't have that information. Now is the right time for the sewer.
No, I appreciate that as long as this component that you're talking about is forceless. No, I appreciate the clarification, but that answers all my questions, and I think it's very useful information. So thank you very much.
Before you guys sit down, Ms. Sykes, you have some questions?
Well, I want to say thank you to Counselor Demott. He did a great job articulating some of the questions I had earlier as well, particularly because we are in a comp plan update right now. And I just want to make sure that my understanding, I think you guys have said it, but really, even though that this is based off of that option two that you gave, the maximum intensity of the existing comp plan designation for this area, it doesn't foreclose a conversation of imagining something that is more, I guess, attractive to the market or more what our residents say they want to see, but it does inform that decision by what's feasible based off of our resources. And so I want to say thank you. I know that there's been a lot of discussion in this room, kind of almost accusations that we haven't planned things thoughtfully. And I think that your work tonight shows exactly how thoughtful our team is at making sure that we understand what is feasible, what the impacts are, and we plan well in advance. So thank you. And I think to Counselor Demott's point, it is really great that we have this tool, this financing tool, that does not impact our ratepayers. So glad that we were able to leverage that. So thank you very much, Andy and Eric and Max.
Other comments or questions from council? Thanks, guys. If there are other questions, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item is a item ten C. This is a contract with Golden Triangle Construction. Ms. Sykes?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Golden Triangle Construction for a maximum amount of $2,396,0269 and authorize a contingency in the amount of $166,130 for a total of $1,827,399, increasing the total authorized expenditure with this firm from the previously approved amount of $734,787 to $2,562,186.
Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from council? Ms. Pinter? Nothing? Okay. If there are no questions or comments, this is an open with your light, please. And the motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item up is adoption of resolution number twenty-nine. Ms. Byrd?
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-nine authorizing the city manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the construction of quiet zones at the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway crossings of Lowell Boulevard, West Seventy-second Avenue, and Bradburn Boulevard.
Is there a second, Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions in regards to resolution twenty-nine? First of all, let me make sure everyone's understanding. This is a financing agreement. We don't do the work ourselves. Burlington Northern does this. We don't have a commitment from them as to when this will be done or how soon it will be done, but it is something that is now fully financed, fully ready to go. It's strictly at when they come in and do the work. With the areas that we're working in, this is one of those where Burlington Northern and we've worked out with them, they have to do them all at once. They don't come in and do one, leave, come back and do another. This is major equipment changes and other stuff. So those will not only become the quiet zones in the future, but we'll also have the signals utilization changing that's going on in there. So it's an equipment purchase installed by Burlington Northern and then operational piece by Burlington Northern. So it's great that we've got it. Now we are dependent upon someone outside of the controls of the city to get to do this. So I don't want people running down thinking we've got a quiet zone tomorrow. It doesn't happen quite that way. Because there are cities here in the metro area that have been waiting several years after they got the money approved before Burlington Northern finally came in and did the work. And we have people watching this. We have staff that's in constant contact with them. But again, we don't have a lot of leverage over the railroads of the United States to tell them to go do the work when we want it done. So cautiously optimistic that we will get something in the near future, but at least we know it's not us that's holding up the project. Any other comments or questions on resolution twenty-nine? This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item is a item ten C. This is a contract with Golden Triangle Construction. Ms. Sykes?
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Golden Triangle Construction for a maximum amount of $2,396,070 for the construction of the England Park Greenhouse Center with a ten percent contingency of $239,607 for a total authorized expenditure of $2,635,677.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Jink, where'd you go? Still around. There he is. This is a part of an expansion that the Parks and Rec Department has been needing greatly for a number of years. But the staff has been working in a very undersized area. We've been adding to it with our median construction, with the new downtown, with the TOD station. And what this allows us to do is continue to grow the quality of product you see in all these areas where the greenhouse starts these from seed to their planted. And that's done with a very small staff, but the expansion and the need for this has been known for several years, and we're grateful that we can finally get it. Not only is it used as a growing part, but the horticultural clubs from Westminster High School and from the program they have get to come down to see actual hands-on work. It's an educational tool as well. So this is being put to multiple uses, not only for some of the future hirings that we might do here in the city, but for kids to understand what it takes to put one of these programs together. So Jason, we appreciate you and your staff and what we're doing. I'm sorry Keith is still not there on a full-time basis to realize what he's been working on for a number of years, but I know he's around part-time, and we appreciate all the work that he and the team do down there. So thank you very much. If there are no other comments, this is a vote with your button, please. And this motion carries on a six oh vote. Next item is an authorization for me to execute an employment agreement with Donald M. Tripp as the services of the city manager for 2019. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to execute a revised employment agreement with Donald M. Tripp for his services as city manager for 2019 with an effective date of January one, 2019, and an automatic renewal for 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023 unless terminated per se to the terms of the agreement.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council? Ms. Sykes?
I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership. Having been on council and having been part of the council that hired you, it is unbelievable to me to look back and see what we've been able to accomplish. And that wouldn't have been able to be done without your leadership.
Ms. Byrd?
I want to echo my colleague Counselor Sykes' comments. I haven't been part of council when Mr. Tripp was initially hired, but I hope our citizens know how fortunate we are to have Mr. Tripp's leadership here in the city of Westminster. He's been incredible in terms of being responsive to our council, to our citizens, to our community at large. I haven't seen leadership like this where somebody has really taken that extra effort to own the position the way that he has, go out into the community, really understand the community that our city serves, and to do everything that he can to make sure that we are answering to our citizens and providing great city services for them. So I will be so happy to approve this tonight. And Mr. Tripp, thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Demott?
I just wanted to briefly say that I'm unsure currently of our direction in the city, and I will be voting no.
Okay. Well, I will tell you that this council is not the only council that has evaluated Mr. Tripp. We've had several councils have gone through the evaluation process, and I will tell you in the most part, there have been things identified within evaluations of any employee does where things need to be improved. I think Mr. Tripp has been responsive to those. I think with anything that we do, anytime we have a point where we think there's a weakness, we need to also provide guidance and where that weakness can be improved. And we try to do that as we have discussions with Mr. Tripp, as he does with any employee. But one of the things I think that has been proven with my interaction with Don over the years he's been in this position and when he was Parks and Library Director before, is the amount of feedback I get from him about what he's doing, but most importantly, what I get from citizens and people he interacts with, not only here in Westminster, but within the region. Outside of Westminster, he is one of the most highly respected city managers that we have in the Tin County metro area. His name comes up often in conversation with what is being done to lead cities, but also where he is a part of a group of city managers here that when they look for guidance or someone to listen to what's going on in their city and offer them suggestions of what they might try, Don's name is one of few that comes up on a regular basis. So I am very appreciative of what Don has done, the work he's done here, the availability he makes to council, and the leadership that he has done in choosing an extremely well-presented staff. He's done a lot of hiring since he's been here over the years. We've had a number of people that have retired or moved to other jobs. But I will stack the staff that he hires and he helps to lead and train against any municipality or county in the state of Colorado and outside of that base because on my interaction on a national basis with other cities. So Don, I appreciate very much what you do, the leadership. I think you've got two excellent deputies that help you do that. And one thing I would ask you is make sure you're using your vacation because everybody deserves a day off here and there. So any other comments from council? This one is a button. So I will go ahead and ask you to please make your votes. And this motion passes on a five-one vote. Moving on to the next item. This is Old Businesses has moved Counselor's Bill number forty on second reading appropriating funds for the 2019-2020 budget. Any comments or questions? Ms. Byrd, if you want to start us.
Just make the motion.
For the motion, please.
I move to pass Counselor's Bill number forty on second reading appropriating funds for the 2019-2020 budget.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sykes?
No, sorry.
Okay. No discussion. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you would, please.
Demott.
No.
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
I'm missing one. Okay, now, motion passes on a five-one vote. Next item on the agenda is Counselor's Bill number forty-four on second reading appropriating a reallocation of funds from the water wastewater, I'm sorry, the water fund in the amount of four million dollars. And Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill number forty-four on second reading appropriating a reallocation of funds from the water fund in the amount of four million dollars to the wastewater fund by interfund transfer.
Is there a second, Ms. Sykes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on Counselor's Bill number Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Pinter.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Byrd.
Yes.
Demott. Yes.
Okay, I'm waiting on one more. Got it. Okay. This roll call passes on a six oh vote. Next item is an item for Counselor's Bill number forty-three that was previously tabled. Do I have a motion to have this item removed from the table? Ms. Byrd?
I move to remove Counselor's Bill number forty-three from the table for consideration.
Is there a second, Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of removing Counselor's Bill number forty-three from the table, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. We now have before us Counselor's Bill number forty-three. Ms. Byrd?
I move to pass Counselor's Bill number forty-three on first reading authorizing the city manager to execute a finance agreement with Aspire Westminster Apartments LLC, an affiliate of Sherman Associates, Inc., and Aspire Westminster Borrower LLC, an affiliate of Sherman Associates, Inc., and Westminster Economic Development Authority in substantially the same form as presented to council for the development of Lot Two of Block B three in downtown Westminster.
Ms. Sykes, do you have a second?
I do have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council on Counselor's Bill number forty-three? If there is none, I will be voting in opposition to this. I was part of the reason this was canceled two weeks ago. I have some serious concerns about the financing agreement that we have here and the amount of money that we're giving in rebates to this particular project. My concern is with the funding that is being brought by the developer. project. My concern is with the funding that is being brought by the developer, a second project that's in Westminster that has now been pulled back on the market for sale, and the interaction that we have with the lack of notification of that to the city to tell us what was going on. I have a serious concern about the viability of this project going forward, and I will tell you that I had this same kind of feeling on only one other occasion, and that's when we voted on Holly Park at this council many years ago. I am not convinced that we have a viable project with this particular developer at this time, and therefore I will be voting no. Other comments, Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you articulating your concerns and voting your conscience on this issue. I just wanted to articulate a counterpoint. This last weekend, as many of us referenced, we had our event at the site of our new downtown. And the first in there was this same developer, and he actually had representatives from this developer leasing out the space. Their retail component, not the residential, is already at 90% leased out. The tenants are completely within vision of our strategic plans and also with our specific plan for the downtown. And I believe that the second phase is going to be even better because he's already provided this kind of catalyst for development. If it hadn't been for this developer, we would not have all of the surrounding development that's also happened. In fact, some put this developer's first deal as a clause. This had to be completed for them to develop. So, um, this developer has a body of work in other cities that shows that he is right on vision and that he is a long-term good, I guess, member of the community, of the business community. So, while I appreciate that the mayor really cares about this community and wants to make sure that we're being responsible, I feel by extending this agreement, we are doing just that. We are investing in the city's owned property, right, to make sure that our project, the city-owned project, is successful. So I will be voting yes tonight.
Ms. Byrd?
So, I'd like to echo again Counselor Sykes' comments. This developer has shown commitment to the city of Westminster. There have been many unforeseen circumstances that have caused costs to increase, and this developer has gone, I think, above and beyond what could be expected of most developers in a similar situation, putting its own money into this project and doing more than I've seen other developers do, to remain committed and to make sure that this project is a success. Again, also something that Counselor Sykes touched on is that this developer has a body of work. It has a history of buying projects and holding on to them and owning them. They're not somebody who comes in quickly, throws money in something to quick flip it and make a bunch of money and then leave. This developer instead has a history of being a part of the community, holding for a long term, and really investing where they decide to do business. So, for reasons, the reasons that Counselor Sykes mentioned, these are the kinds of people who we like to have invest in our city, where they actually care about the work that we're doing and what the citizens' long-term vision is for what we want our city to look like. So I will be voting yes.
Ms. Pinter, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had a comment, actually. I know that our agenda packets are public, but given their size, I'm not sure how many members of the public take the time to read them. And just wanted to read some of the background information to provide some detail and color behind. It's not just a pattern behavior from this developer. There's also things that are included in the proposed work to be coming that are of great value, not just to the development, but to our community, and to bring this particular site back to its revenue-generating peak that we had seen so many years ago. So, for example, Sherman Associates is committed to build two mixed-use projects on Blocks B1 and C1, and B3 has continued to act as a catalyst for downtown Westminster, setting the stage for mixed-use, high-density development and creating expanded real estate market for the downtown Westminster. The combined projects will bring 481 residential units and some 56,000 square feet of retail space, and the rental rates were already mentioned by my colleague here. The quality and urban scale of the projects, combined with 1,000 residents and approximately 240 jobs, will comprise a significant portion of the initial activity for Phase 1 of downtown Westminster. The projects are also in alignment with the city's sustainability and housing goals, setting a baseline for future development. Both will be certified Leadership in Energy Environmental Design Lead Silver and provide 10% of residential units as workforce housing with rents based on household incomes at no more than 80% of average median income for Jefferson County. Just to highlight some of the things that make this the quality project worth investing, that we have expectations based on reports from our staff and this council's own evaluation, that this will be not just an investment of our dollars, but a return on the existing investment and lead to sustainable growth in the future.
Ms. Demott?
Just because I don't want to get it wrong, I'd like to ask staff to clarify for me the exact dollar amount of investment from the city that goes into this.
There's a chart on page 178.
He's asking for it to be.
Oh, okay.
I'm Sarah Nermallin with the Economic Development Department. The total amount, since I don't want to get it wrong either, um, combined credit, assistant funds, loan, fee credits, and tax rebates, it's $15,932,800. That breaks down into $8,775,000 in a development assistance fund, a $2 million loan that extends over a term of 10 years, city fee credits of $2.4 million approximately, and combined fee and tax rebates of approximately $2,744,000.
Great, thank you. I also will be voting no. I have shared some of the concerns as the mayor, but for the same reason that I voted earlier no on our budget, I think there's things that we're not paying for that I think we should be paying for, and I don't see how this lines up with priorities in my mind of what citizens want. So I will be voting no as well.
Motion by council. Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you will.
Sykes?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Acheson?
No.
Byrd?
Yes.
Demott?
No.
Pinter?
Yes.
Motion carries on a four-two vote. All right, ladies and gentlemen, concludes the business of the city of Westminster. However, we will not adjourn this meeting, but we will recess it as there has been a request for an executive session on another item. So we will continue that. We will recess this meeting for the present time in order to complete the WEDA project materials, and then we'll reconvene as the city council. Is that correct, Mr. Frankel?
And, Mr. Mayor, while on the record, you could entertain a motion if there is one to go into an executive session.
So at this time, we've got to do it so we can go in. Ms. Sykes, you'd like to make the motion?
Yes, I would. I make a motion to enter to executive session with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning the impact of the moratorium on the St. Mark's Project and other development applications pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, section is 4B, and sections 1-11-3, section C and D of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the possibility or the move to an executive session after the WEDA project are done, and we'll reconvene as the city council at that time. Correct?
Correct.
No. Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to make sure I got it put in the right.
Apologies. So I understood that you wanted to go into an exec session. Is the mayor requesting that first we address the WEDA agenda before going into that executive session?
City council to do the executive session. Or do we need to go out, then come back?
Well, I don't want to unnecessarily delay the resolution of the WEDA agenda. So perhaps one way to clarify that would be to address it in the motion, that it would be following the conclusion of the WEDA items?
I accept that amendment.
Okay. Is that okay with you? All right. Motion is made as amended. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will do that after we get done with the WEDA, which will take probably all night. First item on the agenda of the Board of Directors of the WEDA, Westminster Economic Development Authority, is for the board to approve the minutes of October the 8th. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approve the minutes of October 8th, 2018 meeting as presented.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes of the October 8th meeting are approved. First item of business is item A1. This is the Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year agreement with the Laramie Company and John Mullins and Associates. Ms. Sykes?
I move to authorize the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year agreements with the Laramie Company and John M. Mullins and Associates, Inc., to provide consultant services regarding the development of downtown Westminster.
Ms. Pinter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments from the authority? Ms. Pinter?
Yes, I just would like to ask for the record, given the previous discussion on agenda items in the last meeting, how critical this development is, to hear from staff on why these consultants at this time, what you hope to get from them, and how we as quickly as possible.
I'd welcome staff to come up to handle Sarah or John, I think would be appropriate. While coming up, I would say I wholly support this. It's been key and front and center in many of our business relationships that have evolved in the downtown, and we really think this is a time to continue to keep this team together.
Mr. Mullins?
Yeah, so the consultants, Laramie Company and John M. Mullins and Associates are working for us, not only for the downtown Westminster project since 2008, but also several key projects like the Orchard Town Center in the early 2000s. So they have a great deal of expertise about the city overall and the retail dynamics that not only impact our whole city as a whole, but also the downtown in particular. And they provide us with a lot of expertise and understanding of not only the real estate, but also the financial and assets that serve those, serve the real estate. So, they are, they provide us with a great influence on, you know, our development of our overall development strategy. They help us determine when is the right time to bring in certain development projects, how do you best set the stage to attract certain real estate markets, and how do you ensure that those projects are, you know, have a strong financial foundation? And so those are, and then therefore, you know, how do we best leverage those projects to attract additional projects? So, for instance, they were very integral in the strategy for bringing in mixed-use residential as the first phase and first projects in the downtown, because bringing in the population as well as the retail serves as a strong amenity base to attract additional development, in particular office and ownership residential. So those types of decisions are what they help us make throughout the whole process. And we have quite a bit of work to do in completing out our first phase of development. We have established about seven out of the 11 targets, real estate market targets that we are looking to have in the first phase, and the crucial ones are office and ownership residential. And we feel that having their expertise and participation particularly in establishing those real estate markets in the downtown is a priority over the next year.
I'd like to add one more thing to knit it. That was really well put by Sarah. I would say, for a long time, back to 2008, there was an attempt at a particular model of using a master developer to do this project to help us realize our vision of a downtown. And one time after another, it failed. And that model proved to not work. But the model that we have today, which combines our city staff, and I want to give a lot of credit to the city staff, Sarah and John, John Hall, Economic Development, all the folks and all the departments that support this, the team between our staff and these outside consultants who have phenomenal reputations in the community at large and great expertise, has worked really, really well. We found a model that worked, and the result of that is $250 million worth of development that is underway right now. And they share in some of the thanks and responsibility for that, but it wouldn't have happened without the team of city staff that was there supporting. So they have really been very complimentary to each other. And there'll come a time when there probably isn't as much of a need for outside services as we have right now, but we don't believe that now's the time to sever that very successful partnership.
Mr. Hall, did you have something to add? All right. Ms. Pinter, you have your question answered.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other comments from staff or council? Seeing none, this is a vote with your button, please. And we have a motion that's carried with a six oh vote. Next item is the extension of the contract with Laramie Company for brokerage services. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize the Westminster Economic Development Authority Executive Director to enter into a one-year brokerage agreement with the Laramie Company for brokerage services for downtown Westminster.
Ms. Byrd?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by any member of the authority? Seeing none, this is also a vote with your buttons. And again, the motion carries on a six oh vote. Members of the authority that conducts all the business before the Economic Development Authority for tonight, so at this point, we will adjourn the WEDA meeting, and we will reconvene as the Westminster City Council for the purpose of an executive session. It's approximately 8:03. We will reconvene at approximately 8:10. Give everyone a chance for a quick break.